Called meeting in the city council. And let me kind of explain the format. First of all, thank all of you for coming and taking your time as volunteers. We genuinely appreciate you being here. Second thing I'd say to Mr. Beatty and to Alonda, a personal thank you. I've had the opportunity to meet with your board a couple of times and it's really helped me understand more about the RAD program. I'm curious about it, but I genuinely appreciate personally the time. Couple of things for tonight. This is, while this is an open meeting, of course it's open to the public. This is not a public hearing. The formality and the stiffness of that is not necessary tonight. We're not going to be taking any action tonight. There won't be any votes. This is really a meeting between two boards of directors. The city's council, the board of the directors of the city, and the board of directors of the housing authority. Both have responsibilities and authorities and both serve in part the same constituents. So it's an information session. I've had the opportunity along with Warren to learn more about the RAD program, but for the others who were not in those meetings, it really is a time to come up to speed. So please, informality is the rule. This is a discussion between two boards and not the typical stiffness of a public hearing. With that said, Dr. Miles, I'll turn it, he's on call, so I respect your time. I'll turn it over to you if you'll just bring us up to speed. You know, think open questioning and discussion is the order here. Fair enough?
Sounds good.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Hey, I'm sitting, Miles, I'm the chair of the housing authority. And thank you for getting together and let's kind of talk about this because as we move forward with housing, and you can see it all over the country, we have to find ways to improve housing. And this project that we've kind of undertaken is one way to try to up our ante on our housing, to improve quality. And by improving quality of our housing in our city, we can actually attract industry. I was just kind of looking at the news the other night and how Charlotte, because their rents have gone so high, they have to designate a certain amount of affordable housing in the city. And between the housing authority and the city, they're getting together trying to figure out how that's going to happen. And so we're doing this through the RAD, the rental demonstration. And I'm going to introduce Mr. Beatty. He knows, he's kind of helped us through this process. I met Mr. Beatty years ago before RAD was even thought about at one of the meetings that's sponsored by some of the state agencies involved with housing. And he gave an incredible talk about what your board is doing for your residents and stuff. And he coined the slogan, there's some boards that meet, greet, eat, and retreat. I thought about, God, that sounds like what we're doing. You know, and so as the years go by, I kind of got to see him and go to some of his meetings. And he has such incredible knowledge on, you know, where housing is going. So I'm going to introduce him. Mr. The Beatty Group in general, this is his son next to him, is a privately owned consulting firm providing strategic and technical assistance to public and private sector enterprise in a wide range of business disciplines. The group team of professional specialists specializes in affordable housing industry. They provide dynamic vision and innovative strategy leveraging creative solutions to utilize the industry best practices and trends to support operational and programmatic effectiveness for our clients. The company brings a new vision to today's affordable housing market and offer strategic solutions to build long-term sustainability. The Beatty Group has provided a wide, broad range of strategic and technical services for the housing authorities. And from my understanding, they're not only just working with us, they work with several other housing authorities in several other states. And private sector providers of affordable housing for more than two decades. Their core client base includes large and small agencies operating from 85 units to 6,000 units of affordable housing under public housing, section eight, rural development and low-income programs for the elderly and disabled. They're truly family business owned and operated by Mr. Will Beatty Senior here and his managing son, Will Beatty Junior. And Stephen's not here. And so without any further ado, I'm going to introduce, or this is Mr. Will Beatty.
Thank you, Dr.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
Let me thank Dr. Miles for that great invitation, right? My mother would be proud of me if she heard him talking. Let me also thank the board for the opportunity to come and share with you where affordable housing is, where it's going, and what's needed, particularly as it impacts Hickory and your community. We're going to try to run through a lot of stuff. Typically, this program that we've kind of pulled together for you is basically an overview. Our program and training for RAD is about a two and a half day course. That gets into a tremendous amount of detail. With you, we're going to keep it at not 30,000 feet, but 40,000 feet so that we don't get down in the woods and down in the weeds. I want to, we're going to talk about three topics here. First being a little discussion about public housing, what the model is, where the model is, where the model is going. We're going to define and tell you that it's broken. Then we'll talk about RAD, which is a preservation initiative that is designed to not fix that broken model, but replace it. And we'll talk about, as we talk about public housing, we will build that case for change or see how HUD has built its case for change and say, this model is dead, we're going to take it out of life support and we're going to move to something that's better and more sustainable. And then we'll talk about the Hickory plan. Where is the Hickory Housing Authority going? How is that impacting what they want to do? And we'll be happy to answer any questions and not to say, don't want this to feel like a lecture. So we'll keep it interactive. Feel free to stop me, ask questions, engage as you see fit. I think it's very important that you really understand where this program is going in order to understand where the Hickory Housing Authority is going. We do quite a few of these presentations to city council. Typically, it's much earlier in the process. We did do one here much earlier. A lot of time has passed since then, and so we're happy to be back to provide the refresher. Normally, after we've done the program or the overview, if you will, with the city, we have been able, in many cases, to form some very strong collaborative relationships, which is what's going to be required to achieve what the RAD initiative is intended to achieve. Let's talk about public housing and what public housing is. You're also going to see me walking around. I can't stand like a creature. I have to move a little bit. Affordable housing, what is it? It is that housing that is affordable to people who are earning a salary at the median income, area median income. HUD drops that down a little lower and say, we ought to talk about it at 80% of the median income, 50% of the median income, and 30% of the median income. Because when you look at the data, those are the critical data points that identify to a significant degree how much people are burdened with the cost of housing. If we look at the cost of affordable housing, and we're talking about affordable housing, it's not all just low income. People who are paying 50% of their income for housing costs, and housing was defined as both rent or mortgage and utilities. In our case, it's going to be rent and utilities. Think about paying 50%, of 50 cents out of every dollar that you earn going to housing. HUD considers that a moderate rent burden. Moderate rent burden says, I'm paying more than I can afford to pay for housing, and I'm paying it to the extent that I'm not able to do other things. Food, healthcare, education, clothing, other things that's a state of the life. At 30%, which is where public housing function, there is a real burden at 30%. Think about the fact that if, that if at 30%, you make minimum income. And you're going to pay a third of what you get out of taxes for housing costs. Where do you buy groceries? Where do you buy clothing? Where do you do other things? Public housing is that portion of affordable housing that is owned and operated by the government. So you've got this big bucket of housing that's called affordable housing that is defined for people at or below the area median income. Some of that is privately owned, some of that is privately managed by private sector investors, et cetera. Public housing is the government's own and government's provider, and it's typically subsidized. Now, the truth be told, almost every piece of property, every house that is bought for anybody at the median income or with and above is subsidized to some degree by the government. That thing, F A J law? That's a federal subsidy. Enjoy the market. Brandon May, Freddie Mac, et cetera. Generally, the public housing piece is run by a housing authority. And that housing authority is typically appointed by the board, appointed by the city. And that board is responsible for taking the resources and bringing resources together to address the housing needs of the low-income people in the communities in which they have jurisdiction. If we just look at a few housing facts, here's what HUD, HUD is much bigger than public housing. Most of the time when you talk about HUD, people are thinking public housing. Public housing is about that much of what HUD actually does. HUD provides middle assistance to more than 4.8 billion households, 13 different middle assistance programs, 18,000 individual contracts, 3,200 public housing authorities, 1.2 million units. 1.2 billion units of affordable housing. Let's talk about that inventory, the physical condition of the standing inventory. You know what it is. I don't think I have to tell you about the condition of public housing. It's old. Units are standing from 1937, 1945, 1953, 1960. Very few built in the seventies, a few in the eighties. Old. Inventory has been neglected due to poor management and a variety of social health and obligations. I understand that the public housing program, the law was written in 1937, was not really a housing program. The public housing program was a stimulus package. It was a jobs bill created after the recession to say, we got this housing need around the country. We've got a lot of poor people, we have a percentage of people who don't have a place to live. We can put together a stimulus bill that will create jobs. And at the same time, we're asking housing for poor people. As a result of that, the focus was not on the provision of affordable housing in the communities that supported them, it was about jobs. And as a result of that, it did a great, had great success in the provision of jobs. It had very poor success in the development of sustainable communities. And that foundation is what brings us to where we are today. Maintenance has been deferred due to inadequate capital funding. If you look at the units, now, and sometimes we blame management, we blame the boards for units being beaten out, but you've got a 1945 structure built with 1945 quality standards, with 1945 technology, trying to exist in 2017. I don't care how much money you spend fixing. You know, you've put lipstick on a pig. You can't fix that.
I have a question. Wasn't, weren't you planning to rehab those units, though?
Well, that was, that's where we are today.
Okay.
But for the last 50 years, the, I'm going to give you, you've got 250 units, I'm going to give you an extra $200,000 this year to take care of those 350 units. In the beginning, not bad, because the units were still relatively new. As the units got older, not nearly enough money. Not nearly enough money. And so people did, they used what they had to do, what they had to do. 26 billion in approved maintenance costs right now. 26 billion. That 26 billion, that brain you up to where you ought to be, it brings you to HUD's minimum quality standard, which ain't much. It's problematic. Now, we all know that 26 billion ain't going to happen. It gets bigger every month. Because as the overall inventory continue to age, to continue to move towards lessons, the need for maintenance money goes like that. That money ain't going to happen. Where is public housing located? Communities that are seriously distressed in almost every city. Some standing at abandoned housing and buildings. You walk through any of those communities around the public housing, okay, then that's what you see. Growing crime mode and safety challenges, gangs, drugs, property crimes, all growing in those communities, not at the full of their best. Poverty industries flourish, check cashing businesses, liquor stores, clubs that prey on the emotions of poor people. Poor access to quality life amenities, healthcare. There are some grocery deserts where people don't have grocery stores within three to five miles. Now, how, how, how would you make that happen? If you drove five miles, every lady got a little grip, that's when the healthcare. Now, some people want to do that, they want to live in the mansions away from the city and that's okay, but they have cars. They got transportation. Low performing schools. It's been proven time and time again that it matters where you're educated. It matters where you live because it affects how you're educating. Because where are what? Community schools. And you hear a lot of people, especially now, communities that hate community schools. And we hate community schools because they, like public housing, are typically underfunded and under-resourced. And guess what? We get the same kind of education that we have in housing. And that becomes generational. And as a result of that generational, what you will see is a big, great, great grandmother came in, then the grandmother came in, then the mother and the kids, as many as five generations spending all of their lives in the public housing environment. System went as I was doing this. Little or no access to public transportation. Without public transportation, they have no way to work. Get nurses, get the doctors, get the healthcare, get the civic and public activities. Can't happen. No public or private investment. Do you see, who are you going to bring into that kind of an environment? Crowded, dilapidated, building facilities, no access to anything. Who's going to invest money in those communities? It's not going to happen. The funding for public housing continues to be that. And it's not just today. General congressional attitude toward affordable housing theory has just not been favored. They are considered, public housing is considered an entitlement. And the monies are just not there. Significant federal deficits over the past 20 years or so. So not only are we not inclined as a government to put money there, now, over the last 20 years, we don't have much money to put there. Little or no funding to support regular efforts to achieve self-sufficiency. How much money can we say to the housing authority? HUD, you're going to have to make it. You're going to give HUD money, I need a million dollars a year to do what I need to do. They can give you 800,000, 810,000. And you've got dilapidated inventories, you've got payrolls, you've got all of the other stuff, even property taxes. Now, we don't call it property taxes, we call it power, favoring the low taxes. The only difference between that and property taxes is the way we calculate it. But at the end of the day, housing is paying property taxes to the city. There are the three stools, the three things that are required for families to become One is sustainable housing in a sustainable community. It matters how you live and it matters where you live. Secondly, is what we call sustainable employment, where I'm not making 7:25 an hour, but I'm earning enough money to provide for myself so that I can live an unsubsidized life. And the third stool is education. If you don't get the education, you can't have the job, which means you can't have a sustainable housing. But who provides that? My position is that when you accept an appointment as a commissioner on the board, that you accept some responsibility for driving some activity to those people that you serve because you don't want people there generationally. You want people there for a while to get, till they get on their feet, and then you want them to move out. You can't move out, you can't find jobs, can't move out, you're going to fall off by the jobs, can't have jobs, you can't get high performing schools that can bring a good education. You don't develop, the other values that are required to support it if you're living there, it probably isn't going to matter. Industry talent is what, what really, what are the merits that really plays before for the people that we're dealing with. Current model is not generally the results. When HUD looks at it, looks at it, when we consultants look at it, I spent 24 years on board, 23 of those years as a board chair. That model is broken. It doesn't work anymore. And we'll talk about how and why it's not working. The current budget level that HUD has is not sustainable. Even funding at 80, 85%, HUD can't sustain public housing over the long term at the level that it's performing now. They must change the model. And add the funding to support the construction of new units. At some point, I don't care how well I build a unit, it gets old and it goes away. Buildings are just like people. They're born, they're great young, they get old and they die. So whatever you put in the building, eventually that building has to be replaced. If you're talking 1.3 million dollars of those units that must be replaced, where does that money come from? Federal government ain't going to do that. Toxic political environment, a major shift in the ideology of providing affordable housing. Many people believe today that it's not the responsibility of the government to provide that housing. That can be argued strongly on both sides. But right, wrong, indifferent, democratic politician independent, the fact is, is that the environment is toxic for public, for affordable housing. Growing demand dwindling supply. Haven't been any new public housing built since Nixon. Frozen at that point. Now, the fair cloth limit, and the fair cloth was a rule that determined how many units each housing authority would get. That has not been adjusted since '70s. In fact, we've taken down, and my best numbers are probably five years old, 200,000 units have been demolished, only 50,000 replaced. Now, roll that forward five years into the situation that we are now, and that 200,000 is probably close to a half million that's not being replaced. And it's not because HUD hasn't tried, they've had programs after programs after programs. Some of you might be old enough to remember Martin City, Bourbon, Reno, Hope City. All of those were programmed at HUD, rolled out to try to address the issues that we're talking about. All of them had limited success. None of them have solid product. And if we look at nationally right now, we're talking about growing demand, dwindling supply. The demand continues to grow big time for two reasons. One, baby boomers are coming of age and they like to live in a different way. Secondly, people who are aging want to age in place so there's no turnover in the inventory. And thirdly, the economics of our country right now, unemployment forecasts drive the need for people to move into rural housing. But if you look at rural affordable housing, nationwide, there are 35 units for every 100 units needed. If we look at that on the lower end, it's probably 20, 15, 25. At the very high end, at the 8%, not a real problem. There's about 101 units for every 100 units needed for people who are earning above the area median income. So what you have is the poverty gap, if you will, continues to get wider, not just in salaries and compensation, but in housing, in healthcare and in education. Increase in rent, stagnant income, being ahead of rent burden. Inflation's about to ramp up. If you look at salaries for poor people and middle income people over the last 20 years, they've been fairly flat. over the last 20 years, they've been fairly flat. Increase in net rent burden. The affordability gap. Huge problem right now. People earning minimum wage cannot afford a two-bedroom unit in any state in America. In any state in America. Salary of $38,650 is needed to support minimum housing requirements. How many could be more than that? You don't get to earn at a McDonald's. You don't get to earn at a seven twenty-five an hour. About eight twenty-five an hour or 10, 10 hours an hour. So that affordability gap is a real problem. Current model is inefficient and ineffective. Serious regulatory constraints, the rules are crazy. Sit down and talk to London about what she has to go through just to spend a thousand dollars. She'd spend a thousand dollars in process doing the procurement that's required just to buy a thousand dollar table. If I wanted to hire a contractor, I don't get to do like private sectors and select the best contractor. I would have to go through a long procurement process that often will net me the worst contractor. And then I get in real trouble if I don't hire that worst contractor. Concentrates poverty. People like my stay in Statesville and as in Atlanta. Poverty is not citywide. Poverty is concentrated in poverty in the community. And the people who are within those pockets of poverty don't get out easily. Their lives are significantly different than the people, than the lives of the people who don't live in that neighborhood. In that political life focus, we can go to housing authority after housing authority, and we won't even have an after-school program. We won't have a program now to teach the person how to prepare a resident. We want to address that academic enrichment that needs, that that kid needs so that when he's ready to move into housing, he doesn't come there. Not there. We talked about the available, affordable, affordability gap. Does not attract or even allow private sector investment. It does, another one is saying, I don't care what kind of deal you make, you can't do anything for my units unless I say it's okay. You cannot encumber public properties or federal properties. You can't go out and get a mortgage on them. Against the law. So anything that you do to public housing, you're gonna pay for. Right up front. Now, I get that 200,000 a year. They're gonna be capitalized. But I got a million dollars in need. I don't have the flexibility to say, I can take your 200,000 dollars a year and pay off a million dollar loan in three, in five, 10 years. And I can use that million dollars to upgrade the property zone. You don't have that flexibility. For instance, if you buy anything, you'd have to pay cash. Now, there are a couple of programs where they will allow you to pledge your 200 dollars a month. Takes two years to do it. To get through the paperwork, get through the process to make that happen. Broken business model. So the latest approach to do it, what to fix in that broken business model is this thing called RAN. Now, I'm going to endorse it even before I tell you what it is. Now, I won't tell you it's perfect. I won't tell you that it's gonna fix every problem. But I will tell you that it's the best program that they've come out with that has the potential to develop sustainable long-term solutions. First one, out of the long list of programs. Now, is it perfect? Absolutely not. Doesn't have some short fault? Absolutely. But it's the best thing going. It's not the Mercedes or Cadillac, but it's a strong Chevrolet. What is that program? It's a demonstration program that tests the impact of converting public housing units to a Section 8 funded platform. Basically, what is it? Now, let's just talk about what it is up front. It is a plan to privatize affordable housing that's gonna get out of the business. We've been talking about that for 15, 20 years. And we've been seeing step by step by step. And this is the beginning, right here. In 2012, the law that authorized this demonstration, and they call it a demonstration about power. This demonstration, they authorized up to 60,000 units to be converted. Well, when they first started, they had 12,000 units approved. Because everybody's afraid of this. You've told us this before. I've written this story, I'm not doing that again. But then HUD came out and they talked to people like us and said, here's what we're gonna do. And you need to go tell your clients that they either jump on this train or they get on our train later on. You know, this is gonna happen. So we moved from 2012 to 2015, we went from 60,000 to 100,000, then 20, then we went to 185,000. Now, we're at 225,000. And the recommendation in the 2016 budget from Trump, the administrative dictum, was to totally remove the cap. Which says to us, this is no longer a demonstration. This is now a program that will become law probably in the 2018, 2019. How does that work? Hundreds of contract with qualified property owners and say, you know, I've got a deal for you here. And I don't really care whether you're a nonprofit, for-profit, or some combination of, but I've got a deal for you here. If you take over this program with us, if you will transfer all of your public housing or any parts of it off of the public housing program onto a Section 8, a Section 8 platform, I've got a good deal for you. And I'm gonna get ahead of my slides here because the deal is so good, I won't tell you why. I'm gonna give you all the assets debt-free. On an average 12 to 15 million dollars for a beacon set housing. How many of you always assets debt-free? In addition to giving you the assets debt-free, I'm gonna give you 40 years of guaranteed revenue. I'm gonna give you a 20-year contract. Since we have 15-year contract, we'll talk about that. But I just wanna get your mindset on this right now. I'm gonna give you a 20-year contract with a guaranteed renewal for another 20 years. And the law reads that the government must offer and the property owner must accept renewal of the contract in similar terms. I'm gonna follow that and I'm gonna break a deal for you. I'm gonna loan you the money to fix these units up. And I'm gonna make it non-recourse. Non-recourse means that I can't come back after you with good work. Now, what HUD wants you to do with this deal is take that 10 million dollars of assets and leverage it to raise the quality of your inventory from that poverty-sticking community that we've been talking about to a market-grade unit and to build as many units as you can build and as your market can handle. And they're saying to the board, don't worry about the debt. Be prudent in what you do. The deal's gotta make sense. But this is my deal, I want to take care of it.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
You said that it should become law about 2018. Do all the public housing have to become privately done by then? Or are they gonna have some kind of phasing period after that?
Well, they started the phasing period in 2012 with that 60,000 units. The law is going to pass, and when that law pass, actually the law already passed. They just have to say, okay, we're gonna do it. And it's not fine because the bottom line, that's because HUD ain't even doing it. It's revenue neutral when we're talking about that. So they're going to convert all of the units that can convert. Make no mistake about it, not every housing authority will make the cut.
It's not gonna be as easy as throwing a switch, either.
Right. Can't do it. And those who can't make the cut, who knows what HUD will do? My personal opinion is, is that they will go to the original housing authorities. Right now, you can go into any area of any 20-mile radius, and you've got five, six, seven housing authorities. In Georgia, we've got an area that's got seven housing authorities. And only one in the housing authority has more than 100 units. And that, and every one of those housing authorities, I've got a executive director. I've got a major staff. I've got property managers. I've got investments. And the other side, I've got non-performing assets. HUD's already concluded that can't happen. That is not sustainable. So what you're going to see is HUD saying, I'm gonna have one housing authority, a one provider, and it's not going to be a housing authority because public housing is going away. That whole public housing model is broken, it won't be around. I'm going to have one housing provider that I'm going to fund in this area. So you fire, here's how you're gonna do it. Unless they do it voluntarily, they're eager to decide how they do it. In Georgia, we work with two housing authorities. One has seven counties and one has five counties. All to come out of that area. They aren't working totally well yet because it's new. And you've got a board with 35 commissioners on it because you're trying to facilitate politically all of those municipalities that you've involved in their consolidation. But we're working on the model, and I'm sure that other people are working on models around the country where we can make that work. What is the goal of this program? Number one is to ensure that housing remains permanently affordable to low-income households. Gonna leverage private capital to preserve assets. And what that basically says, you know, I know that you can't have any debt on these units now, but I'm gonna change the rule. I'm gonna remove my DOT or my deed of trust, and I'm going to allow you to leverage those units to bring in private sector capital for you to rehab your units and the other units. Major, major piece. Stabilize funding to support long-term planning. And we'll get to what that means. What that basically means is that for 40 years, I'm gonna put you on fixed income. Your rent can never go, your subsidy can never go down. But I am going to adjust it for inflation periodically as required on an annual basis. So if I'm doing planning now, I can plan 20 years out. And I know what my revenue's gonna be. It's stable. I don't have to worry about new administration coming in. Finally, we had 65% or close to 85%. I know what my revenue's gonna be. Now, I'm gonna be a good business person and control expenses and do all those things because I'm going to move from a budget-based model where I tell HUD how much money I need, and they give me some money. And my job at that point is to responsibly spend it, which we don't do a good job of. I'm gonna move over to a model now that says, here's what you got. Make it work. Make it work. Now, I have to be efficient. After the internal, I've gotta find a way to make good, solid businesses that will generate a favorable bottom line, that will, again, we're not in the business to make profits, but I have to figure out a way to continue to expand my capacity to serve. And it takes money to expand, to expand nonprofit capacity to serve. So you gotta drive that money to the bottom line because HUD is saying, you doubt how they're gonna get from me. That's it. Offer residents greater choice in mobility. Out of both of these programs, and there are two type of programs, but I'm gonna do this. If a resident doesn't like the community that you created, and the resident doesn't think you're doing a good job, the resident can request a voucher, and they're guaranteed to receive that voucher and leave. Choice mobility. If you're in a community where you don't like, renting apartments you don't like, you pack up and leave. Typically, you may get a minor, you might get a voucher. But most residents don't have the choice. But under these rules, under these rules, if your customer service stinks, if your service delivery stinks, if you're not doing right about the people you serve, about the community, they can say bye.
Who makes that determination?
They're gonna have to get the resident.
The resident? The resident, without any merit or without, I mean, what kind of?
Well, if you're not paying your rent and you validate the lease, you get the voucher, you just go away. But if you're doing all the things that you were supposed to be doing and following your lease, and I'm getting poor service maintenance people don't show up, and you're letting the units go, the yards look crazy, crime is building up around me, I would say, I want my voucher. See you later. Now, it moves the housing authority from a marketing standpoint, it moves the housing authority to where it has to be more private sector-like. Have to be more private sector-like. Why? Because it has to compete with other private sector providers. Because this is not only available to the housing authority, it's available, as we said at the beginning, to for-profit, for the listed office. Now, they have to be in a deal with the housing authorities to make it work, or they have to do lower income tax for development, but they get the same benefit. And at the end of the day, the program must be revenue neutral. Can't cost HUD any money. That's huge.
Is HUD actually loaning the money, or they simply, or they guaranteeing?
They guarantee the money.
Okay.
Basically, you gotta find a bank. Banks gotta look at your plan. That's what I think that would work. Banks don't give you the money conditionally. Condition is that FHA approval and insurance. At the end, you close the loan and you treat it like you would any private sector loan from that one up. Provision is a RAN. Convert all the part of your current inventory to the long-term Section 8 contract. If I've got 330 units, I don't have to convert them all. I might decide at this point I wanna do 150 of them because that's all I can handle right now. Or this market isn't going to support a lot of these, a lot of what you asked me to do. Now, there is a provision where HUD would do, if once they look at you and see you're qualified, it almost is not your decision anymore because HUD's starting to say, well, why don't you move all of them? What do you need to help you move all of them? And what they're doing is pushing you to that decision to convert all of your units because they want out of this business. And they're wanting to get out of this business. So when you go to HUD and say, I only want to convert 100 units, and 100 units I've got, I've got the capacity to... got, I've got the capacity to borrow 5 billion dollars, but I'm gonna only borrow two. HUD looking at it and say, you know, that's a good thing, but let's talk this week after you think about it some more.
What is the public housing's stance of how many are they gonna convert?
I'm waiting for proof. All of them.
In what timeframe?
We'll get to timeline. We want to actually be converted, the first units, I would expect. In fact, everything should be converted by the end of September. What they ought to do is, like we said, they've got annual contributions contract right now. That is the funding model. The funding model is a contract between the housing authority and HUD. And they say that, the ACC is a grant. It's a grant contract. They say, we will award you this grant to provide these services to our low-income residents. And here's how you're gonna do that. What's going to happen with the conversion, with RAD, is it gonna cancel that ACC with the housing authority and enter into a housing assistance payment contract with a nonprofit, which would actually be the new owners of the inventory. So they're making it impossible for the housing authority to continue public housing operations. The ACC that provides the money for that, for public housing, will be canceled when you convert. And they're not giving the new Section 8 contract to the housing authority, they're giving it to a nonprofit.
So in our, in our case, it's, is it New Dimensions?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And what was the logic of changing from whatever the name was to now New Dimensions? What made that?
Well, before that, you were Hickory Housing Authority.
And then there was?
Uniform Capital.
And Hickory Housing Authority stayed there. Hickory Housing Authority didn't go away.
There was, you're referring to Uniform Capital.
Uniform Capital Ventures.
Oh, Uniform Capital Ventures is not a single asset entity. And HUD requires that the nonprofit is a single asset entity. What they're doing is making it, they're protecting their own interest because they're saying, we're not gonna allow you to get into a whole lot of very big businesses that would provide liability against you that might impact this $10 million worth of inventory that we transfer to you. I'm gonna give you $10 billion worth of assets. Number one, I need to protect it. So I want you to put it in a nonprofit or a for-profit. But you, even if you're a for-profit, you're going to have to live by these rules. And these rules say you're going to be a single purpose entity, and you're not gonna be doing anything else but this. And your only debt is gonna be related to this so that you don't end up with bankruptcy on some pieces because some parts of it is not performing, that would encumber or endanger those assets that were transferred to you at no cost.
So if it's a single entity, per, single purpose entity, then originally, I think two, three years ago, when you came up and spoke, you talked about mixed use, about getting something on the ground floor having built, so that would not be allowed.
Oh, it will be allowed.
It will be allowed.
Yes. Because it would be a part of the deal on which the assets would be transferred. Now, if you're going to do a second piece or third piece beyond this initial loop, you will have to set up another nonprofit. We're working with the CAF count, and they've got eight nonprofit organizations in 18. Because every tax credit deal has to have a special purpose organization that houses it. And so if you do five non-tax credit deals, then you're going to have five single purpose entities.
So who assures that the expected performance takes place? Is it the bank who makes the loan? Is it HUD? Who's monitoring the plan?
Bank and HUD, which is why HUD doesn't really look well on what we call no-debt convergence. They make it difficult to do. Now, no-debt convergence means that HUD's gotta do that work, and they don't want to. And the model really does slide. Now, what will happen is that you still have half contract, a housing assistance payment contract with HUD. And that contract requires you to meet certain conditions. And if you don't meet those conditions, then HUD can walk away, cut your funding, and you do what you want to do, though, I'm gonna give this 300 people 300 vouchers, and I'm gonna get somebody to help them find a place to stay. Then you worry about what to do with that new slum you just created because you didn't take care of the property. Now, what does that motivate? We hope strong collaboration between the city and the nonprofit that's providing that service. Because ultimately, there is some exposure for the city if it doesn't work. It's not gonna cost you, I mean, you're not gonna pay anybody's debt, but you still have housing that must be provided for your constituency. You still have areas of town that you can't allow to deteriorate by this block.
Where did the vouchers come from? They issued the vouchers?
Yes.
You have to qualify in order to get that voucher.
So if I'm an apartment owner, and I have 10 apartments, and I want to come to somebody and say, I want to take six of these and get into the Section 8 voucher program, who do I talk to and how does that work?
Right now, we're in housing authority. Basically, anybody that owns a piece of property that wants to make those properties Section 8. Some applications that you fill out. But then they're going to do an inspection of your property, and your property has to be the certain quality standard. If your property in fact meets that quality standard, then they would certify you as a Section 8 landlord. And then people would come to you with vouchers, and you would get subsidies that would come from the housing authority, and portions of the rent would be paid by the resident during the year. Not difficult to get into. That's a different Section 8 program than we're talking about. That's called the Choice Voucher Program. The Choice Voucher Program is a voucher that's issued to the resident, and it follows the resident wherever he or she wants to go. If they can go to China and live, if China will accept that voucher.
Well, isn't that the goal of RAD?
Yeah, that's one of the goals of RAD.
But you, now, you explained earlier that in, that the residents are gonna create some accountability for the, for the nonprofit because they've got the ability to move.
Now, let me buy that.
So now, but?
It's only two years.
Okay.
After two years.
Right, so what type of voucher? You said there's two different kinds of vouchers?
You've got a housing, you've got a, what we call a project-based voucher. You've got a choice voucher. A choice voucher is issued to the resident. When the resident leaves your unit, that voucher goes with them. A project-based voucher is issued to the unit itself. And when the resident leaves, that unit's, that voucher stays with that unit, and you bring another person in that qualifies for that voucher or for that subsidy.
Aren't you trying to move them all to the choice? Is it that the point of getting, getting everybody the same degree of freedom to move wherever?
That might be an ultimate goal of HUD. I don't see that happening for a lot, for a long time, probably not now, lifetime. That started out as the, as the, as the problem, as the goal.
As the goal was to give everyone that.
What they did is, when they first created the voucher program, if you go back to the old days where you had a black project or a white project, and everything was segregated, you still had huge pocket of concentration, concentration of property and huge pockets of slums. HUD said, I need to be able to give these people a way out. So they issued vouchers. They implemented the voucher program. And the voucher program would allow anybody that lived in public housing to apply for that voucher. As it turned out, African-Americans who were issued vouchers couldn't find landlords that were rent-toe under their circumstances. And that was the beginning of the segregation of public housing. So we moved from that 1970s where it was somewhere in the 50, 50, 60, 40 range to about 92% being majority now.
Well, it, like in Hickory, public housing from the 70s started across railroad tracks.
Yep.
And is it the, the RAD concept to take it away from there and blend it in in other areas?
Yes. The RAD concept, and the way it's defined, let me put it this way, is to deconcentrate property. So from public housing, from HUD perspective, they want to do away with public housing. They want to raise low-income housing, the quality of, of low-income housing to where you don't know the difference between subsidized housing and housing that's not subsidized. And they want all of these people to live together, people who got jobs, people who got income, and people who don't.
And I'm gonna quit talking, but?
No, keep talking.
So you got, you got the public housing that's been over here in Hickory, and it seems like you've got the, the voucher program where you can blend in with like apartment owners that want to participate in the program. Well, what's, what's the middle ground that you're, are you talking about?
Mixed income communities.
So you're talking about, again, buying properties that in different locations?
No. Well, that's one way. That's one approach. Our approach would be, let's build quality units that people who are not subsidized wouldn't mind living in. Let's build quality communities that people who don't require subsidies would be willing to live in.
What's the difference between that and the housing project over there? What, what's the difference in that? Is that like a mixed-use type?
That's not mixed income.
Okay.
That's low-income.
Okay.
And what we would like to see, and what HUD wants to see, is mixed income, everybody living together. And two ways to do that, you can scatter everybody all over the place, or you can create sustainable communities where people don't mind living in the areas that you provide.
But wouldn't that, that Choice Voucher do that very thing?
Not Choice Voucher, carry it to wherever.
Wherever you want to go.
That's, that is a strong goal and our food is supportive because it does give you choice.
I think that there needs to be clarification. When the resident opts to move after two years, HUD does not issue you a new voucher. You have to use a voucher from your Choice Voucher Program.
Well, like we said, it's net, it's net new for revenue from revenue standpoint. So HUD's not gonna generate a new voucher. That voucher is going to come from somebody who already has a program. And in this case, it will be one of Alanda's vouchers. She would have to give to that person. In other cities, we've got housing authorities that don't have any voucher programs, and what we have to do is cut a deal with somebody that's got a voucher program to sponsor that, that level of activity. Now, one of the things that's coming before HUD is basically to say to HUD, you can't make this happen unless you're going to generate some other voucher because what you're actually doing, avoiding the net, net revenue cost of the house to HUD, but you're actually reducing the availability of vouchers that are available to people. So that's being dealt with now.
How long does a voucher last?
I don't think there's any, as long as you qualify.
For a generation.
For a generation.
Yeah, as long as you qualify.
As long as you qualify.
Yes. As long as you qualify.
So, um, let's see. So in our case, and it's helpful for me to kind of understand it, you know, here on the ground in Hickory, in our case, come September, we get fully converted to the RAD. We would, the nonprofit would take out a mortgage, own the existing public housing that's in place with a, with a bank. Bank's willing to lend because they know they're getting a certain amount of money from the federal government for 40 years. And then the housing authority would take that money, in our case, and rehabilitate existing stock, existing housing stock. Would they rehabilitate it to the point where it would be mixed income?
No.
No.
No. You can't borrow enough money to do that with eight of those units. The second phase, that's phase one.
Okay.
If we are, we're a little bit forward here.
What would it take to renovate what we have as, quote, the public housing at this time?
To rebuild?
Rebuild. Basically, here is the teaching direction of the housing authority.
When we looked at it, it's gonna be about $33 or $34 million. If we rehabilitate, we did it first class.
To knock them down. We've got a couple of phases. We're talking anywhere from $38 to $42 million. But the direction is to upgrade quality of our portfolio and market status. Stop bleeding.
What will that cost?
Right now, we're looking at nine and a half million dollars.
What?
Nine and a half million. That's about $30 million. Expand the number of units in our portfolio, develop our management jurisdiction. At this point, Alanda has a huge waiting list. Only one in five people who qualify for subsidy or benefits actually receive. How long is the waiting list, Alanda? Two, three years?
Three years.
Three years of waiting list to get in. So we need to build more units, and HUD wants you to. Then, of course, we want to provide support services that we talk about, and then, but at the end of the day, the two here, where we want to get to with RAD is from this, which is Request Today, to this.
Well, that's a rebuild.
That's the rebuild. Now, that was one of the first plans that we looked at. With all of the stuff that's happened since we started, this might change some. How the wheel changes. But that's where we want to get to. That's where Hickory wants to get to. The short-term marketization, we're gonna ensure that all major systems are sound. We're gonna upgrade interiors to improve quality of life, flooring, lighting, electrical fixtures, aged mats, et cetera, et cetera. We're gonna pass next to you the upgrades to enhance market appeal and honor its ability that traditional projects look, so that it starts to look market rate. That's the bleeding. We gotta stop that bleeding. Now, longer term, we know that these units are going to have limited life.
What is that limited life? Could you still, even if you do this rehab and spend the $9 million, you still have, where public housing is located, seriously distressed areas, the school issues, you still have those same issues. So now you've spent $9 million, then how is that gonna then let you do greater if you've just sort of dressed it up a little bit?
That piece of the plan will still wait in the middle. At this point, what we'd like to do is put together a long-term plan that, and engineers are going to tell us through what we call RPCAs, a RAD, Physical Conditions Assessments. They're going to tell us what the life of the systems are, and we will continue to look at that and monitor the useful life of the entire unit. HUD says, basically, when the cost of repairing a unit exceeds 51% of the cost of replacing the unit, then it needs to be replaced. They'll go have a fund, capital for it if they can have it. So at some point, we're going to hit that sweet spot, and we need to be prepared at that point to start knocking units down and replacing them with new units. And if at all possible, we would like to generate a mixed-use, mixed-income community right where some of those units are. Now, to do that, the, the tough part of that is that I've got 300 folks, 311 families.
Yeah, what do you do?
I gotta build some units prior to.
To place them in order to tear them down.
And with me that, under the HUD rules, there was called the Site Neighborhood Standards Assessment that we have to do. And so we don't necessarily get to decide exactly what we're going to do. HUD has to approve.
So that was gonna be a question. So is HUD requiring you to reinvest in these existing units as a part of being enrolled in the RAD? Is there an option to?
Yes, there is an option, but, but here's the deal. Yes, there is an option, but but here's the deal. And we, in fact, we're going through that right now. I've got a community of three hundred and forty-four units. And what HUD is saying, you don't have to do any work upfront except critical needs. And critical needs is life and health health things that must be addressed. Once you do that, we'll let you convert if you can beat out the other criteria. However, you must maintain a long-term capital plan that shows that you can, that when something goes wrong, you can fix it. And when it's time to replace it, you can replace it. So what HUD said to us when we went to them with the study is that, okay, we'll let you do it, but I need you to put up a million dollars on the front end in escrow to begin the funding of what's called the replacement reserve. So I got to put that money up front before I can convert. And in addition to that, I want you to put, in this particular housing authority's case, I need you to put a thousand dollars per month, a thousand dollars per year per unit in that reserve. Because you've got a ton of work to do because you're not doing anything upfront here. So HUD's not letting you get away with that. So how do you get that number down? Most housing authorities won't have a million dollars to put in. So you go in, you look at it, and so instead of doing no work with that housing authority, we're going to do about two-point-eight million dollars worth of work at a minimum on that, which reduces that million off the front end to about five hundred thousand and reduce the three hundred thousand per year per unit over the next twenty years uh, to over over two-hundred-some-thousand dollars a year. So HUD says yes, but the numbers won't allow you to do it most of the time. So at the end of the day, why not stop the bleeding? Address these units that we have right now. Whatever the cost is, you got to you got to deal with it. I'm standing as a part of that, that some of those units are going to totally age out and will have to be replaced. Now, we have to put together a master development plan that shows how I replace those units. And to even get started with that, I've got to build some additional units on the front end to prepare for that transition.
Do you have a date of how long you feel like some of those, even if you rehab them? Is there, out of the three hundred and eleven units that you own, what percentage of those will probably, within two years, really need to be torn down?
In two years?
Three years.
No, none. Uh, we hope, now, what we're looking at at this point, we're trying, we're pulling out into a rehab, all of the majority of the work that needs to be done in the first ten years. So we're looking at at least ten years' life with those units. It's going to take us that long to put together the plans, get another unit to build, have the financing, get people ready. And we still have to deal with those areas that 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 Tom Tom Spohack talked about, those communities around where public housing is. We don't know what that number is yet. We don't know what has to be done to make to make that happen. Now, one of the things that we are doing is working with the city and city in some places, saying, we've identified thirty pieces of property around us that need to be done before we can make this happen. And the cities are saying, I only have that much. Take these in and then knock them down, or rehab them and rent them, understanding that at some point, they're probably going to go away. Then we have to have them, I didn't go out and negotiate, buying some of those properties on our own, either knocking those properties down or rehabbing. In Statesville, where where I was commissioned, we went into the toughest area of town, South Statesville. Drugs, alcohol problems, and all the value units for the most part. We went in and there was a furniture factory there. And we convinced the furniture factory to let us have that property. And it answered brownfield stuff and answered issues. And we finally got HUD to work with us to clean up those issues and the tour. We built a new office and maintenance facility in the other that area. Blowing away our people. We bought up houses that are around it. And and the one thing that we will probably do differently is I go to this parent and said, I'm going to buy that house from you. She's a landlord. And when I buy that house, because it's a crack house, we're calling it newspapers, the television, to see the police come and practice jump off in that empty building, to see the fire people come in and do their training on how to deal with a burning fire. And all we had, they burned it down. And all we had to do was pay the police, cut the debris, and we built houses there. We built single-family units there that facilitated our family self-sufficiency program. So if you met all of those that you needed to meet, and we still couldn't get you bank financing, we built you a house in finance. Now, problem was, after the first two or three houses, the landlords got smart. And so all of a sudden, a twenty-thousand-dollar property was at fifty grand. And then, of course, we were able to work with the city to go have a talk. Either you move this house up to this code, or you need to do something else, and so we were able to do it. So the problem, there is a solution. But the solution of the best solution requires collaboration between the housing authority, or in this case, New Dimension and the city. Understand that the housing authority wanted it. Wouldn't want the housing authority going away. Housing authority is state authorized, and only the city can make the housing authority go anyplace. But the housing authority has certain certain advantages that New Dimension won't have. Housing authority condition bonds. Housing authority can partner with New Dimension and private sector developers on low-income tax credit programs. Housing authority still has the power of investment donation. New Dimension will have those kinds of things. So it's important to me that they continue to work together.
What other, what are the core responsibilities of the housing authority after this transition occurs? You mentioned some powers that they have as far as their daily or weekly or annual responsibilities.
We're working with housing authorities in other areas now to say that you don't have assets. You don't have a program. You don't have income. Partner with the nonprofit, and you become the expert that guides and represents the city in the development of affordable housing within their jurisdiction. Because you can still go after HUD's money as a housing authority, that New Dimension might not be able to go after.
So that that annual funding contract obviously goes away, goes.
Yes.
So there's no funding for.
We're leaving for some period of time the employees, or some employees anyway, in the housing authority from New Dimension. And so the housing authority will have a management fee with New Dimension, where they will manage those units that have been turned over to the new owner for them, for a management fee. That management fee then generates some revenues for them that allows the board to have time and very, very limited resource to be able to start talking about how we generate alternative sources of revenue.
Have you considered discussing with the council of government since there are other areas here in this, like Lenore, Morganton? They have had meetings with the Congress of doing this, something to make their regional housing.
I think that the housing authority at New Dimension, in this case, is going to be willing to work and collaborate with anybody that can help them achieve a mission. And that mission is the provision of safe service and housing, and sustainable communities for the people that they serve.
RAD conversion will take place pretty soon. When do you actually see physical work going on rehab?
January twenty, not, no, early twenty eighteen. And being finished in twenty nineteen. We've got some, uh, if we look at the development plan, the modernization, uh, it's about nine-point-five million dollars in total development cost. That's thirty thousand dollars per unit, expected to close in November twenty-seventh date. The redevelopment, new construction, the source of the financing, the low-income housing tax credits, FHA two-point-one D fours, C D B G matters, home funds, private, private developers coming to the table. Total development for the units that we're talking about is between thirty-seven and forty million dollars. Uh, hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars per unit today. That number will will change with inflation and with other things that we look at in terms of design. The first couple of questions, conversion, and we've talked about pretty much all of that. Uh, the construction timeline is, we're saying, the plan began January twenty eighteen, completed December of twenty eighteen, early twenty nineteen. HUD rule, uh, says that you have to start within thirty to sixty days of closing the financing, and you have to complete it in twelve eighteen months. The redevelopment piece was saying completion of that phase master development plan in mid-twenty eighteen. It's going to take us that long to pull together developers and all the technical people to sit down and deal with the concept that we've got in mind. Begin of protection of phase one of the plan in early twenty nineteen. Uh, we still got a lot of work to do.
Under the RAD program, what, if anything, changes for the two entities? First being the the city council and second being the board that's in existence now? How how does that change over the RAD program, or does it change over the RAD program significantly? And what would those changes be?
There are no changes for, uh, city council. You still have control of the housing authority. You still appoint board members to the housing authority. The nonprofit is a standalone independent nonprofit. They will appoint their own commissioners. They, through their bachelors, will determine what determines of those of those, uh, those appointments will be, et cetera, et cetera. Those can be, right now, the same, could be commissioned from the housing authority, might not be. It depends on what the needs of the nonprofit are and how they determine that those needs need to be met.
So they appoint their own board, just like any other nonprofit does?
Yes.
So, for example, they might want to say, let's get a construction expert as a member of our board since we're going to begin in this modernization?
Exactly. Okay. A real estate person.
Yeah, right, right.
Or developer. Or a property management company.
Right, right.
But from that, then you, this new group would get a management fee for anything constructed?
No, they won't get a management fee. They will own the properties. They may correct. They will pay a management fee.
They will pay a management fee.
Probably pay the entity that's nonprofit.
Yes.
The nonprofit will be paid the fee to the housing authority for services.
Yeah, let's let's be clear. The housing authority still has to be able to manage the properties, and it needs to be approved by HUD. It might be at a time where the cost, HUD rules nothing, the cost of doing it, the nonprofit might say, I don't want to self-manage.
Sure. Is there an opportunity for a private investor to invest in the first phase of the project?
Not the modernization piece. Well, yes, well, it'll be taken. The rule allows it. The plan at this point don't include, doesn't include.
Would you want to encourage that?
Absolutely. But again, where we are right now, we need every debt we can get. And what we would rather bring to the table as a private investor, bring the million dollars of this thirty million dollars that I've got to raise for a piece of the action. We don't have any trouble raising this money to do modernization. What we will work hard at, and it's doable, we're doable, we got to raise somewhere between thirty and forty million dollars.
Who's the, who owns the deed to the properties?
Today?
Yeah, you're right.
Actually, the housing authority has a deed to the property. HUD has a deed of trust on it. That deed of trust basically says you can't do anything with it without approving me. You can't put that on it, et cetera, et cetera. HUD will release that deed of trust when the property is transferred to the nonprofit, and at that point, the nonprofit will own the deed. And the debt.
Yeah, the city doesn't own the properties nor the debt.
Right.
It's the authority that does.
It's not the authority. You mean today?
Yeah, today.
Well, there is no debt today. But you own it. The city doesn't own anything.
Right.
Your only relationship to the housing authority is that the law provides that you appoint the commissioners.
That too.
Once the commissioners are appointed, they are totally independent and self-sustained. And the law prohibits your interference with them in the way that they do business right now.
So nothing, it's pretty much the same as it is now?
Yes.
Nothing changes?
For the housing authority and the city, nothing changes, except that you don't get the power, hopefully. I mean, basically, these will be nonprofit, nonprofit owned. And to the extent that no other nonprofit will be paying taxes, the property taxes will not be paid to the city of the unnet.
Would not be. Would not be paid?
Yes.
Right.
But in terms of your relationship to the housing authority, nothing changes. You still will have no control over the housing authority beyond appointing commissioners.
Just like today.
So that would change it for you.
And does HUD have any alternative to RAD, or is RAD, I mean, that's that's the only route we have right now, only route that's available right now?
No.
Uh, there are some limited processes, and quite frankly, Hickory took advantage of every one of them. It's called a CFFP loan, where the housing authority, well, HUD, under certain circumstances, will allow you to borrow money from the bank and pledge your capital allocation each year or some portions of it to pay that off. And there's an entity proficiency loan, that basically, uh, the housing authority and some provider will come in and will do an analysis and say, if you do all of these repairs, you're going to save this much money and energy, and you're going to pay me from the savings of, the energy savings that are generated from the project. The unnet, you can apply to, uh, sell some properties that the housing authority owns. But you've got to go through what's called Section eighteen process, which is, which is difficult. And you have to, for the most part, replace those units, because if you're going to demolish or dispose of a unit, then you have to replace that unit. So whatever you get from it has to go into into the unit itself. So the answer is yes, there are some rules allowing you to do some things, very, very limited. Doesn't do much for you in the long term. Another question, yeah?
What kind of a contract do does the housing authority have with you and for what length of time?
I mean?
What contract, what length of contract do they have with your group and for what time period and?
We have a consulting contract where we actively provide consultation services on operations, management, unit resources, nothing. And RAD, right now, is a big piece of that. Our contract, I don't know the dates now, goes through some part of somewhere in twenty eighteen. And in terms of power, we get paid by them. We get paid for what we do, just like attorneys. They don't use us, they don't pay us. And you lose, we certainly will, yes. Any other questions? There's a quick giveaway information in the agenda about RAD and some details. If you have any questions, uh, you could probably get back to that and look at it pretty quickly a lot. We certainly won't have a second answer for any questions that you might have. We certainly won't have to take your answer, any questions that you might have.
How many units are currently empty?
Are they?
How many units are currently empty of the owner, owned units?
I don't know, I mean, what you're making sure?
I think we have six empty right now.
How many?
Six.
Out of 311?
Yes.
If you have a waiting list, the wait, they aren't qualified at this point?
They are qualified to go and wait.
To fill the six vacancies?
Well, it's not that easy, because basically, you got to go to the person, they got to have, be able to get power on, they got to have deposits, they got to pass all of the other admission data, and some people just can't do it.
Okay.
And so you might go through 20 people to get to six. Any other questions?
Other questions? Folks on council, have you heard of that? Are there other things you'll talk about?
Anything that we didn't cover, any concern we may have to address.
Is it going to be a test?
Are you comfortable with those from me or do you owe you?
Yeah, I, I guess I just still want to explore why the public housing authority would not be open to working with the council of government, since this is where the other entities are going and not to just wrap it all into one large housing authority.
I don't know that, I, I can't.
Or to be open to that.
Wouldn't be, would not be open to it. I think one of the things that the board would have a responsibility for though is to ensure that that arrangement is in the best interest of the people that they serve here in Hickory. At this point, you're not required to have a, a regional housing authority at this point.
But it sounds, that's what they're doing.
It's a long process that HUD would have to, have to drive.
Well, it also, what you shared.
If, if, if agencies are merged into a regional process, a lot of times, we, we look at that as being a punitive outcome for those who didn't perform.
That's typically what happens. When we were at Statesville, we ran five different housing authorities. And basically, HUD would call us because we had done the work. It took us 10, 12 years to get there, but we got there, and we were doing the work. And so whenever HUD had any trouble housing, they'd give us cover. And we would manage those housing authorities, he had the matter of trouble to be able to where they're, they're sustainable. So in the industry, it was not a good thing to have your housing authority reporting or being run by someone else.
Also, what you shared in the small group meeting we had, this cog program is pretty new. But you've been, if I understand it from housing, you've been working on this RAD program for years. So this is not a Johnny come.
Well, let's understand, let's understand this. The responsibilities of the board is to achieve their strategic points, and then we talked about. RAD and LoR, they got to figure out how to make it happen. And they started working on that long before RAD. I think we had a $1.20 to $2 million CFFP loan. Might, might be up to units that had to be worked on. We just paid that loan off, but it was there. There was, there was the other one, EPC loan, the end efficiency loan. They have done, over the last 20 years, everything that was available to make going up, to try to make it work. RAD came about, and so RAD is another tool. RAD is not the end. We have to get to that new development with or without it. One way or another, the housing authority has to get there because they're owed to the people that they serve. That is the oath that they took.
You're talking about the people that's being served, are they on board with this? Do they know?
If they weren't on board, if the residents say no, then it's no. We have to send the HUD with the first application. We had all three meetings, and we had to write down everybody that was there and their contact information, every question that they answered, and what our responses were to those questions. Then they have to go in with our question. And if the, if the preponderance of the group said, this is a bad deal, we don't want it, boom, the brakes come off.
But that's already been done.
That's already been done. And that's not just one, you've got two or three times in the process.
I'd like to ask specifically with regards to the Hickory Housing Authority, in addition to the meetings, there were customer surveys done, and they took the results of that survey and acted upon that. So the last several years, they've actually been streamlining, they've been improving services, they've been receiving specialized training and bringing in specialized people to be able to prepare to operate more efficiently under this new model.
Well, if one of the things that, and I hope I'm authorized to say this, I'm authorized to talk about RAD. They don't authorize me to talk about anything else. But I think I have to say this, is that London and the housing authority took a beating on a lot of turnover issues. But when we did the assessment years ago when we came, we determined that you don't have the horses to run this race. You certainly don't have people that you need to get to the next level. And she provided tons and tons of training to make that happen. And not everybody made that cut. And going forward, as we start to operate more like a business, more like a private sector operation, you have to perform to get paid, you have to perform to stay. The housing authority won't pat you on the head for doing your job, because that's what you get paid to do.
Wasn't that kind of goal to start with really, was to have the turnover, you have people moving in, get established.
Employees.
Employees, I'm sorry.
Residents' turnover, you need also. Other than that, you can't build enough units to handle the folk that you require to serve.
And then how are you going to get away from this generational poverty if?
Again, let me go back to what they already did. They brought in an FSS program. Famous House of Mission's a program. Now, HUD, people say that HUD, HUD only gives you staffing money. How old is that money you have to come up with? They had a Ross program. They went after this long before RAD. They were doing this. But they have adopted in their strategic plan responsibilities for those three areas that we talked about. Sustainable housing, sustainable community, job enhancement, opportunities for residents, and education to make that happen. That's in their plan. And, and that's where they're going to have to have people who know how to do that. And not only that, they have to, have to have people who are committed to doing that. I grew up in public housing, in my old family, and I have a little bit of an eye, a little bit of insight in terms of what's needed. And I got to say that this board that's seated now have not faltered in the least, no resistance. They basically said, if we can find the money, go do it. And in some cases, they've told London, go do it anyway. So they're working on that piece of it. This is not a one-legged stool that's housing going, this is not a brick and mortar organization. They're dealing with the whole person. Where the person lives, how the person gets employed, how they get educated, and how they can move from where they are to self-sufficiency. So what we're talking about here, the name is one leg of that three-legged stool.
I think that's our goal as a council. I mean, just speaking for myself, I want to know our citizens are go taken care of. I mean, I think that's our goal.
Well, not to put you on the spot, Mr. Seaver, but now you will have an opportunity to participate in it.
Because you're going to be looking for.
Partners.
Partners.
Yes.
And so you're going to be looking for the city to actually partner, or the housing authority to partner.
Or any other organization in town. When we were in Statesville, and even in some of the other places right now, we had partnership with the United Way, we had partnership with the school system, they provided us building space throughout the school program, they supported us in 221 million, $1.6 million to provide that, they provided busking and transportation, so our kids could get home after we kept them. We had people that provided meals, so that they could be there. We partnered with the police department. I mean, we, the whole game, this is a community effort, and Hickory Housing Authority can't do this alone. And again, with all due respect, it, it's not their purpose or their job to do it. The people right here have to scan it. And what the housing authority wants to do is give you an opportunity to put that scan there to leverage, make it work for the people that the housing authority is serving that you represent.
Folks, what else do you want to hear? Got a pretty long meeting, we put, Mr. Beatty, I think we put you through the paces tonight. What else, anything?
I just want to be prepared for the test, that's it.
Folks, thank you all very much. Dr. Miles, I'm glad you got to stay and didn't get called. Thank you, it was a great presentation. Again, this isn't a public hearing, we're not going to take action tonight, but thank you for your courtesy, your information, it's helped us a lot. Thank you, and the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
The housing authority is complex.
It is.
Yeah, I'm.
Well, it is.
Very, very complex.